Welcome to the February 16th Council meeting of New Franklin. And we have two first readings and one second reading tonight. We begin with our first reading for Public Utilities Committee. Mr. Powell.
All right. This is a resolution authorizing the Franklin enter to the exclusive agreement of public services of Ohio Halling LLC for the collection and removal of residential recyclables, refuse, waste materials in the city of New Franklin and declaring an emergency. So this is a extension, or actually it's a new contract. Is that correct there?
Yes.
So it's the continuance of the services we have. It's a new contract. It's good for four years. There is an increase in the cost of services. This contract was bid out by the City of Green. We are piggybacking on their contract with a couple minor differences from the City of Green versus us. Is that due to timing from when we agreed to it versus when Green had...
Yeah, that's what Republican, you might remember, we came last fall to let you know Republic, the piggyback was approved and then Republic came to us in December and said, listen, the rates that we...
Yeah.
We can't meet those rates. And I think those bids were in January, February of the previous year. For whatever reason, they indicated that they were going to need some additional, some bump up in that. And they also wanted to go to the biweekly recycle to make it economically feasible for them. At that point, they were talking about somewhere north of $18 that they wanted to go up. So we did, we had negotiations and discussions with them and we got an opinion from our law director that as long as we were substantially, the terms were substantially similar to Green's and we could still go forward and piggyback. And so we ended up negotiating the numbers that are in this contract. I don't know if you want to speak terms on this.
Yeah. So what I'm paying currently, I looked at my bill and it's $14.62 a month is what it applies to. The new rate will go to $17.37 a month, which is roughly a $2.75 per month increase, which is only 75 cents more than what the City of Green has paid. I wanted to look at what other communities were paying for similar services, so I pulled a few other communities. I pulled up what Republic would be charged in another community that's used them as a sole source. And as the mayor said, they're at $18.77, which is higher than what we'd be paying with this contract. Found a community that has Republic as a preferred hauler instead of a sole source. That means people can still use who they want, but if they use Republic, they actually got a discount on that. And that rate was $20.65. I looked at Kimball and they're right around $22.10. And waste management was over 39 per month. So with us being at $17.37, I don't know if we were going to go off the grid or get anything. Actually, I'm pretty confident we wouldn't get anything that would come anywhere near that.
I would agree.
So I don't know if anyone has any comments, questions on this?
I have a comment. I think it was a good rate. I think it was undesirable what happened. But I think that we came out, because she would have accepted it, I think we came out better, Paul.
Yeah.
Because the other rates are really high.
And I think from the time the contract was originally bid to when we entered into it, a lot of stuff has changed in the economy.
It has.
So I think that kind of justifies it.
And like you think, Kevin, that had we bid, we would have been in trouble.
Right. I would agree with that. So how's everybody feel about the waiving, the spending rules for the two reads?
I think they only gave a certain amount of time that they would cover that until we...
Well, we're extended now to March 31st.
Okay.
You could go to a second reading if you want to, but we would really need to pass it at that second reading.
I'm okay with waiving. I didn't have a problem. I just needed to know the timeframe.
And I'm interested too that not to give, to give Paul credit for, he was very unhappy with this rate. We all should know that. He fought and fought to get that lower, but this is where we're at. But just so you know, he was fighting crazy to get this, get it to where we, pretty close to where we were before, but just want to give Paul credit for that.
I would agree. I mean, he did a good job to get the numbers down there. And like I say, it's basically the same service we currently have.
That's a double thing.
Mr. Powell, if I may real quick, for senior citizens, the rate will be 15.17 per month versus the $17.37. I have a lot of people asking about that. And then this is a contract that runs four years.
Right. There's, the Green's was a five years.
Right.
And we're picking up on year two of theirs.
Yeah.
But the rate's frozen for the first two years.
Right.
And then the same incremental rate for years, the third and fourth year of our contract and four and five for them. We have options here, but it also allows us to align with Green and country's going to piggyback on this same process. And so we're looking forward to, when we get to that point, joining forces.
Just making a quick comment too, just as long as that $17.37 is the unlimited and then you could go, if you're on a limited service, that'd be $16.85. Senior citizens, Jim said, that's 15.17. And there's some people still on the bag service, which is price per bag is $23. And recycling for bag customers is $6.47, invoiced separately from the bag cost.
Those are the same as Green. That, those bags, those day rates are the same as Green. There was no increase in those for Green.
And then the increase, like you mentioned, was a slight increase in '25 and in '26. And it says a 1.0275% increase. So it's a nominal increase. It goes from, on the unlimited, it goes from the $17.37 to $17.85 per month.
That actually is better than Green. Green's went up 4% in year four and 2.5, or 2.75% in year five. So we've got a break on bumps in years, in the final two years of the contract.
Yeah, like Kevin said, all the, all the services, the bag to the letter, it's just a common point, it's not a percent, so it's very minimal.
So any other comments, questions on the recycle and trash refuse comments? Any questions from the... Great, so I will close the Utilities Committee at 6:09.
Thank you, Jim. Our next resolution is the Laws and Ordinances Committee. Mr. Jennings?
All right. Opening Laws and Ordinances at 6:10 will call. We have one resolution. Resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a contract with the City of Barberton to provide prosecutorial services for the City of New Franklin and declaring an emergency. So this was a pretty significant increase, a little contrary to what we had with trash. So I'm going to have to ask your house.
Sure.
We've got a little better understated prosecutorial services than I do, 15% per year.
Yeah, I appreciate that. What this involves, when misdemeanor cases, felony cases, that all go through, they start over in Barberton Municipal Court. And they have to be prosecuted over there. And so that purpose, you know, of course, our law enforcement are there as the law enforcement witnesses, but we have to rely on the Barberton Prosecutor's Office to actually prosecute those cases. So there, and that's been a long, well, there's a while. I don't know if there's an alternative to them. In a sense, it's a buyer's market. But they were at $16, but they were at $16, uh, 16,000 for quite a while. The last contract, I believe, was a three-year contract and was $16,000 per year. And so it goes back to 2018. It's been, it's been $16,000 since 2018 with no increase. So I, they took a hard look and they're, you know, everybody's trying to tighten belts. And there were pretty extensive discussions with our law director and their law director and cost analysis, et cetera. And this is what they felt that they needed to charge to justify their expense. So it's a bump from the 16, but it hasn't been increased, as I said, for the last four years. And it's a necessary service and it's, I can't even begin, there's no comparison to what it would cost if we had to try to prosecute those ourselves.
We would probably have to have a prosecutor if we got into that. I mean, we're...
We'd have to hire somebody to be a part-time prosecutor and follow their cases. And there's, you know, several times a week that person would have to be at the courthouse, not to mention liaising with the officers, et cetera. And you start getting into hourly rates for legal, $150, $200 an hour, you know, we spent twice this. And we wouldn't get the quality of service either. I mean, not to demean whoever we were hiring, but they would be plugged into the group and following. You know, their law director works, so.
So that's...
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yes. In the resolution, it states that the amount for calendar year 2023 is $21,600, but in the contract is $21,160. And that is continues to be the 15% increase.
That's on me.
So we need to change in Section 1, the third line down, to $21,600.
So we need to buy a second reading to allow that to be added to that.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Okay, under Section 1, the third line down, $21,600, this should be $21,160.
$160.
Yes.
It's in the contract. It'll be under Section 4.
Fabulous. Thank you.
And then in public comment, do we need to, we could wait until three on it?
We kind of need to go, we kind of need to wait until three on this because the first bill is due April 1st or March 1st. I believe it's...
I would say that's a legitimate reason.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't give this to us until now. They had, you know, it's not that we said on it. It took a while for them to get to us.
That happens every time we get it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, we'll close.
Wait, I was just wondering, I remember reading a couple of years ago about if you've got a traffic ticket here, we, and the fine was, let's say, $120, and we only got like, like $17 of that. So the rest of that money, does that, does that pay towards this bill? Is what they end up with people?
I would say that goes to the clerk of courts and pays for the operations of the courts, not just the prosecutors segment of that. But that's something that's been on the radar here that we're going to try to achieve, and that would be to adopt our own codified ordinances. Because if we, if we, if we charge, right, currently, we charge under the state ordinances through how to revise code. And when that happens, then the money stays with the court. If we codify our criminal ordinances and traffic ordinances ourselves, then those fines will come back to us. But that's a relatively complex process. It requires us to go through all those codified ordinances and see if, you know, does a cookie cutter fit us? Some of them are easy. Speeding is easy. When you get into things like disorderly conduct, for instance, you know, the rest of, you know, any number of things, it's going to take some time on that. I certainly plan to present that, you know, certainly within the next two years, not to be overly optimistic. You know, if we get to it this year, that'd be great, but that's, you know, that's on the radar. Because ultimately, it's going to save us money. And it allows us to tailor some of this stuff to our specific needs. Having said that, it's, we really haven't had an issue in that regard, that wait a minute, somebody's getting charged under this section and it doesn't make sense, you know? The majority of what we'll eventually, I expect, adopt will be exactly what's there. But we need, we're going to need to look really offense by offense to do it.
So if we did that, we got our own codified, would that increase our prosecutorial costs?
No, actually, no.
Okay.
No, they don't care what, you know, what statute they're prosecuting in.
Okay.
In most of these cases, you look at the city, they're almost word for word. But the time factor is going through and making sure on each one of them.
Who would do that, Paul?
Well, there's agents, there's organizations that we can hire to do that, to at least get us the, the, the template.
Template.
Thank you. That's what I said before. But then we're going to have to go through the template ourselves, and you guys aren't. Then we're going to have to make recommendations to you. And there's going to be a fleet involved in that. And, but that's, that's in the plans.
All right. Anything else? Closing Law and Ordinances Committee at 6:17.
Thank you. Our next resolution is a second reading for Community Development Committee. Mr. Jennings?
All right. Well, open Community Development at 6:17. Resolution 22R12, Resolution for the Camden Alphity Corporation Construction and Test Pickleball Courts Assistant Complex and declaring an emergency. Just a review, Camden Alphity, it was bid at $996,500, which is roughly a little less than $1,000, lower than the next bid. I have stated at the last meeting that I was in for adding in, because going all in, we left off lights and electrical conduit at $172,200. And I just, I'm still standing by that. If we're going to do it, let's just go, go deep and do it. And, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't know what the heck we're fighting for anymore. I'm going to throw that out there. I've lost focus of who what we're, what we were holding back for after speaking with several residents in New Haven. I mean, the vast majority afford this. I took a hike over there myself. I didn't, snow was still pretty deep, so I didn't, well, it's close, I didn't walk to back to the woods, but I could see it. And I drove to the other neighborhood where the cul-de-sac is. I 100% agree with those residents. I would not want people parked in there, but there's nothing blocking noise and view as it is. It's all open. I bought a house behind this elementary school with children there. I didn't get upset every time children were laughing and playing at recess and there was a fence and things at night. I actually kind of enjoyed hearing that. And for years, we're a part of it. But all that nonsense aside, we're going to go for the third reading, but does anyone have anything to add to, as it pertains to this bid?
I agree with you. You just said, we've been talking about it and I think it's time to do it. I think the opposition was that we were going to have to, unfortunately, cut down some trees, but already having our ball fields there and stuff, it just, it's, it's going to be a full sports complex.
It is. And touching those trees, there were, the larger the trees, just for safety reasons, would need to come down regardless if you do this or not. They are, there's a bunch of rot, I don't know the, or something with the term, but there's definitely rot there. They could come down on their own, they may not, but yeah, I'm just ready to move on. But honestly, we have, we have the willingness to do it. People seem to be excited and wanting, I know there's a little opposition still, but that's just where I stand.
Yeah. Thompson, do you have anything to add before we open it up?
I have a couple things real quick. Do you talk about lights in the last meeting that I kind of, I agree with you on that. And I was doing some research on the lights and looking at solar lights. There doesn't appear to be 100% solar lights available for, that is, for the solar assist, I guess. And so I'm curious that if we do a solar light type thing, it would still need electricity, you know, that there might be some EPA grants available to help with that lighting if we go solar, or as much solar as possible. So I'm just throwing that out there. And then one of the things that some citizens have had a concern about is the cost and paying back. And the mayor has thrown out a thought process of $75,000 per year. Now, that's not written in stone, that's just, you know, this is, this is an option. We could do $75,000 a year and have it paid off in seven and a half years. And a concern is, well, what about other projects that we could do? And so another option of paying it back would be to look at what we have in carryover over every year, and 75% of whatever's carried over in the park fund goes to paying off this debt. Now, this year, we had approximately $220,000 in carryover and we're planning on putting $150,000 towards the courts. That's only 68% of the carryover. So if we were to do 75, and again, that number can be flexible as things come up throughout the year. But if we look at just 75,000 or 75% or any percent, you pick the number, of the carryover, then we're not committed to a specific dollar amount. So if things come up, if there's projects, if there's, there's an opportunity to put a playground set or whatever, improvement, and we need that extra money for the parks that year, the money's available to us. We're not committed to doing that. And even at the $75,000 per year, we're not committed to that. We're just, you know, that's a guideline, that's an idea. So I just wanted to throw that out as an option to look at for paying it. I agree. I think, I think we're, we're pretty much ready to move on this. But we did tell everybody we would do three readings on it. Like you said, it would take time again for, but I just, you know, wanted to share those thoughts that I have.
Thank you.
Stayed up late at night, thinking, not able to sleep.
Those, that concept on lights, that could be a future project that we could vote for grants.
It could be, but one of the things to consider, if that's what we want to do, because I couldn't find, again, I couldn't find anything that was 100% solar at this point.
You could probably put a small solar barn in.
Well...
That was, that was maybe a carport kind of thing.
That's possible. That's way advanced than what I was thinking. But my thought is, if we're going to do the lights now, then we should probably consider at least running the conduit underneath, just like the dry, the dry sewer that we did on Manchester Road.
Well, that brings up a question that I've gotten from a lot of people, and that is this concept of changing this plan. So a lot of the opposition has said, well, you know, we would be more in support of it if it was less, less pickleball, more whatever. My understanding is that what you proposed is what you proposed, and that's where we're at.
Well, it is. I mean, council is always free to amend, and you could decide that you wanted to add other options and amend this resolution for that purpose. My feeling on it is this, that, that the whole issue of lights is, is, as a general rule, yeah, do the whole thing. As a general rule, if you think you're going to have lights, you want to do the conduit. But whether or not we're going to need lights, whether or not we're going to want lights, there's a separate, there's a separate school of thought on that. There are some people who would prefer not to have a lighting over there so that you don't have people later. So I didn't really want to tackle that issue, or I guess, let me put it another way. I'm not sure everybody would have, would have been fully heard on that issue of, yeah, I like the courts, I just don't want lights. And that's why my thought was to leave it as an alternate. And talking to Kevin Noble, we can run the power overhead, we don't have to do conduits if we decide to add the lights later.
And that would be a cheaper way to do it anyway.
And then we can also look for separate grant money for that phase of it. You know, as I said, we're going to chase money with the U.S. Tennis Association, so that's why I, I'm inclined to, to not amend this because, you know, people have seen this one. But I, and I also think we could come to the lighting as a further stage if we need to. And the last comment I'll make on this is that we didn't get money, but we did find out that we are still alive on the federal appropriate budget appropriations. And we didn't shake that bush. The Sheriff Brown's office reached out to our grant coordinator and let her know that we revised it error, that that had been decided and had not. So how are we going to have any false hope?
Will that opportunity go away if we pass the legislation?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to, we'll still have the debt.
Okay.
Well, I don't believe that, other than the, the alternates themselves, we can't really just, like, say, less tennis courts.
No, 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 no.
You have to, you could take out an alternate, but you can't do something within the alternate because then it'll have to be your bid.
That's right. Yeah, we don't, we've already bid twice.
Yeah.
We'll go through, so about that, the trees on the property, I said we'll broker you a price of $20,000 for a mumber, $4,000 for trucking, and then my survey, to clearcut it, will be $12,700, and that'll be a positive income of $3,200 for the city. In the event you don't want to use the Lohaw trees to do the work, a brokered fee of $22.25 would be $4,500. I tried to give it to you earlier, but...
No, that's okay. You guys state your name, I think, so they...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're still...
Oh, okay, then fine. I'm sorry. Yeah, Brian has met with, I forget your...
I talked to Brian on the phone today about the broom, but we didn't, you know, it wasn't a lot of conversation on why we did it to you today.
I appreciate that. I mean, we still have time in that regard. That's going to be a separate component, whatever we do with the clearing. I mean, this gentleman was at the last meeting, we invited him to come up, he came up. Brian met with him, they walked over and looked at the site, and he's in the process of putting a proposal together for us, so we're all ears. If there's a way we can get the same clearing done and make this...
Last thing I remember hearing, you said you could get it for free. I'm, I beat free.
I don't want to see no paper.
I got it right here.
I don't doubt you. I don't doubt you. I'm looking forward to it.
I wouldn't want to embarrass myself.
No, I appreciate that.
Plus, as far as that went, the stumper boom and everything's getting to kind of...
He says he's got that. That part of it was covered.
I just, you have to stay...
For my services, I'm just going to get all the material above the stump off the project. I spoke to Brian about a broom. I was worried about the parking lot in the school for mud and stuff with our trucks. He said he would take care of that, but, you know, I guess last time I was here, they said that they'd blow the chips on the property, you know, and this would stay and somebody would do that. When you're doing a construction project, you can't leave the wood chips on, you know, on the job site. Nothing will ever grow. And, you know, my bid for $12,750 is for complete project finished, and you guys get $3,200 bucks.
I can't believe it here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you worked with Brian on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll get, you'll get some paperwork over to the, to the mayor so he can...
Well, he'll do it. It's the best I got. But it's all legit insurance and everything.
Anyone else? Yes, Rob?
Your discussion of doing the electrical, I know you've, you've kind of gone back and forth. If you decided to put that in, you said it was about $175,000, about that good?
Sure, for, yeah.
Just for talking. So if I understand from my notes, the city was going to put forth $566,000. If you add on another $177, right?
$172,200, yeah.
Okay. So 566 plus 172, what is that, 900 and some, 950,000? Let's just round it to that. You were already talking of seven years to...
Maybe about 730.
730.
Okay.
730.
I'm not worried about the, okay, my, the point I'm trying to get at is you were already calculating or anticipating that it would take seven to seven and a half years for the parks to reimburse the city. Adding on this other 172,000, is that going to extend that seven out to 10 years, 12 years?
Could be extended a few years out of that.
I mean, what I'm getting at is now we're taking money out from the Parks Department, whatever that amount is, for a longer period of time to do lights when you have other options, I guess is what I'm saying. So it's something else to consider. It's not just going to be seven years now if you add in the electrical that you're talking about. It could be 10 years, at least 10 years, if not more, depending on whether you fluctuate the amounts. That, I just wanted to throw, put that out there so that it's put on the table for you to consider. It's not just, well, let's just do it, or this is, you know, I've got another 172 in my pocket burning a hole. It's going to impact the parks reimbursing the city fund for it. Just wanted that out there so you guys could consider that.
Okay, thank you. And I don't disagree with that. I mean, that's all 100%. Yeah, I'm not on the opposition. My train of thought was that it's a construction site, we might as well make a construction site bonus.
Well, understood. And whenever you're...
We could do aerial tests.
You're doing any construction, you're always doing the blue sky, and then you go from there. But it needs to be considered that the more you add on to this project, the more time it's going to take the parks to come back, you know, to pay it back. So, and that's, you know, it's going, you know, it could be 10, 15 years. You were talking seven to 10, and now it could be 10 to 12 or 15. And that, now you're starting to get into the decade of repayment.
That's a lot.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, sir?
I have two questions I've had.
I have two questions I've had. The last meeting I was here, it said the high school, when they have a tournament, they use five courts.
God damn it, sorry, guys.
And I was wondering if that could be an option, just to build the amount that they need for, for a tournament. And another thing, I think we ought to go to some school place that has tennis courts and see how much they do play after dark.
Right, so I guess I'll address both of those. The latter first, because we need to go down there first. The, so my son had played tennis all through high school, and yes, there are, just, just because of the time of year, there are times you had the depth, those, those matches do end at the dark, especially in the league tournaments. It's not long in the dark, you're not talking nine, ten o'clock at night, but, you know, eight, eight, but, you know, in the fall and springs, I mean, it's six-thirty, it's dark, you know, they don't start plays.
When, when is tennis season, this time of year, or is it?
Boys and, at least for, for my experience, the, the boys and girls was one spring, one was in fall. So, you know, they, they play each other, but, yeah, I mean, it's dark out at six-thirty. This match would go to seven, seven-thirty at night. If there weren't the lights, they'd maybe get a few matches in. And it all hinges on how many players that, that, that team has at the play, you know, and how many courts are available. As, as far as how many courts, I mean, that, that's, at this point, that's, we, we bid at this amount, we could have to start over again. I'm not saying it's impossible, but we're moving on what we have already.
That's the point that I made, that I've had people in the community that are asking, oh, hey, can we shed this, cut this back, can we compromise, and all that kind of stuff, and that's the problem. It's, it's not a problem, it's where we're at. It's been bid, it's been bid twice. What we've got is the upper, you know, the options we have in front us is what we have.
I do want you to know that, oh, back in October of twenty-one, or right around, when these, when the idea blossomed, we put together a committee, we, we asked the community, hey, if you're interested, join our committee. And we formed a committee, we called it the Nets Committee, and we had, I had a list of tennis ball people on that, including the guy who was a coach at Manchester, no longer is, but he was a tennis pro at Congress Lake, and he was a coach at the college, and he's very knowledgeable when it comes to tennis. And then we had a number of other people that had a lot of tennis expertise as well, and then we had a good segment of people who knew about pickleball, and so that was really where the, where the formative discussion went, okay? Two courts, three courts, five courts, six courts, what do we need? And that was, that was a pretty unanimous conclusion that six was enough. So I just want you to know, we didn't pick it out of the air, we didn't want to be extravagant, but the sense was that if you're going, again, part of it, if you're going to build them, you know, build them, and it, to your point, Mr. Fetterman, if you've got six courts, maybe that helps with the lights, you know, that should get more matches in before you need lights, so. Anyone else have anything on that, this resolution? Counsel? Okay, we'll close at six-thirty, through.
Does anybody else have anything to discuss? Regulation meeting? Okay, so a call to order, the February sixteenth meeting of the City of New Franklin, everybody in their lives, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Cox?
I am here.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stott?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of February second.
Right.
We have a second, Kelly, would you do a roll call? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for January two thousand twenty-two, subject to audit.
Right.
Kelly, would you do a roll call? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Now it's time for public comment. You get four minutes to speak. Kelly, I'd like for you to give your name and your address, and we have that, and please address what you're saying to counsel. You're welcome to come up and use the podiums, or you can stay in your seat if you prefer. Does anyone have anything to say? It's me.
My name is Jody Mackey. I live at four zero seven three Melton Avenue, and I'm here because I know that counsel has spent time working on short-term rentals in New Franklin, and so I'm here to kind of find out where we are, and I express my feeling that it is really time to do something about short-term rentals in the New Franklin area. Thank you.
Yeah, I would add, I hope you got my phone message.
I did.
Okay, good, and I'm glad you're here. And I started my phone message, I apologize, because it's been about a week before you called, but it was almost, I got it. And what I expressed, and I let you know I was going to talk to counsel about tonight, I'm so glad you're here. We, we have spent a fair amount of time, there's been energy, and we've just reached the point where we just weren't sure, and so it, but the good news is, there's, there's been a lot of work done on it, and if counsel decides to re-engage on this, then we can start with whatever the last draft was, and, and then make a decision if, you know, if, if this is something we want to tackle. I, I know it's growing out there, it's tricky business.
It's growing very quickly.
Yeah.
And, and I just feel like things like that should be, you know, before, before then, silly things are starting to get grandfathered in that may not be what.
We're, we're starting to see properties there being bought specifically for Airbnb or for.
And not just a single homeowner, people that are buying, buy properties in the area, and, you know, they're running it as a business, and their business is affecting our community drastically, so.
I assume that would be laws and ordinances? Laws and ordinances committee, we'll have to pick that up. You have, you have the historical.
Yeah. Yeah, because I remember working on that, Mr. Cox was working on that.
And I just brought information in a couple of weeks ago, that they ask this, and we ask about it, because it is, it's a need, it's something we've been talking about, and I think the problem has been, we didn't know quite how to approach it, and now it's at a point that we have to approach it.
Yeah, that's probably a fair statement. And when you get into it, and I, and other jurisdictions, and, you know, we'll see what other jurisdictions are doing, one fact.
I thought I forwarded some.
Yeah.
Some other jurisdictions.
And was there a battle up there, some of the challenges out there, or was, I thought there, that there was some loss on the agenda today.
There were some tweaks to it, but no, no huge resistance.
No, I, it's, what you can, you can expand, the basic issue is what you're talking about, somebody buying five houses, how are they managing these houses? I know this, we had conversations with some people who own some of these, and appear to be very diligent in how they're running it, they've got sound meters, they've got cameras, and they really police the units, and they try to make sure, you know, that, that it's not offensive to the neighbors.
Well, the, the frightening thing to me as a homeowner, and it, and they're not just buying just on the lake, they're buying throughout the community, and if you get on Airbnb and read the descriptions that they're presenting, the first, the, the descriptions are presented in a way near upper deck, near hips, near, and then if you read the reviews written, a lot of the reviews of the people that have stayed at these places are, the neighbors were rude, and the neighbors have called the police, and, but, you know, I get that, too, but if it's enough that they're putting that in the review, it's enough that it's something.
I guess my, my takeaway of what it is, is I, I'm not aware that we can prohibit them. I'm not aware of any, of any municipality who has effectively banned those. And by understanding what we got from the legal was that the best you can do is regulate them the best that you can.
Right.
And, and actually, what we ended up with, it was started expanding some other areas that make a lot of sense, and some of the houses, for instance, if the banks buy them foreclosure and they're not keeping those up, it requires people register those, so I, I'm all for it, and.
Well, registering, or possibly even, you know, having it be a seven-day rental.
Yeah.
Minimum, a minimum, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I have a.
I'm sorry, anybody?
Well, I have a awesome quarter though, Airbnb, and they have.
A lot of those.
They have, if I look a little tan. So they have, they have, first of all, they have a local bed tax that they are able to apply, and I don't, I have no idea whether as a city in the state of Ohio, we can do the same kind of thing, we don't have any hotels here, so. The other thing is they have different areas of the town, and again, this is Florida, so it's going to have different, different state laws. Some allow seven days, some require thirty days, some require a full month. So I know there's, there's other places where Airbnb.
Regularly.
Yeah, I'm interested in digging into it and figuring it out. I've, I've, I've had experience on both sides of the Airbnb situation, I travel forward quite a bit, I've stayed in Airbnbs. I've also just talked to Mr. Powell, Mr. Cox, who are also on the laws and ordinances committee with me tonight about nuisance property legislation. I, I'm new here, I'm, I'm trying to get my feet wet and figure out what can be done. I've had a lot of people in the community that came to me during the election worrying about pieces of property that have been, you know, either abandoned, sat abandoned in foreclosure for, for years, you know, or just people who live there have, have really made a mess out of their property. I don't know if this would be in the same vein of legislation, or if it would have to be if we separate. So I, I think you've got, I think you got our attention, and we'll, we'll start.
Thank you, I, I really appreciate it.
I'm assuming there's a history of some of these properties that we need, or somebody to know about?
Well, yeah, I'm sure there would have to be, but I, I just suggest to you to get on Airbnb and Portage Lakes, Ohio, and see what's offered in general, and then look at the reviews, and just, just.
I would say that, Mr. Powell, that we have not, we haven't had a lot of complaints. The only ones that have reached my desk, not to say that they're not out there, they're just not calling us, but, I mean, the, the couple that reached my desk, really only a couple last year, and a lot, they basically had to do with parking, the people were parking and, you know, blocking streets and that kind of thing. So we haven't had the, I, I, but I'll check into that. I don't believe there's much of a history, our police haven't responded to those situations, but we'll take it one day as well.
I'd say if there is some sort of record, you could, you had, it's made to be mindful, and to make sure it's encompassed in any kind of legislation.
And keep in mind, a lot of properties are in Coventry, not necessarily just in Franklin.
That's what I was asking about, because the police have only, our police have only responded to the ground ones.
But it's, it feels like there's kind of uptick, like the, the ones I'm aware of, they're in the process now of rehabbing them for this, homes for this, and like I said, not necessarily right on the lake, although some are on the lake, and it just, it's, it's like this underlying, something's going on here, and so.
What I've seen other communities, they have short-term rental licensing agreements with their community, and then there's criteria that need, and if you're in violation of it, so many complaints, and your license is full, there's, there's all kinds of stuff that there is.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kelly, would you read our first reading, resolution twenty-two R fourteen?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an exclusive agreement with Republic Services of Ohio Halling LLC for the collection and removal of residential recyclables, refusals, and waste materials in the City of New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This is assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. We talked about this in our community meeting just a little bit ago. Essentially, we've got a, what I consider to be a good rate. If you were to go out and redid this, I would expect the rate would come back higher. Does anybody have any other comments on this, or you guys okay with new sustainable rules? Do we have a motion, Mr. Sandoval?
Second.
Kelly, could you call counsel?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Do I have a motion to that out?
Oh.
Second.
Kelly, could you call counsel, please?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And our second reading, Kelly, would you read resolution number twenty-two R twelve?
A resolution awarding a bid to Kavanaugh Building Corporation for construction of tennis and pickleball courts at Siskel Complex and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the Community Development Board, and ask the time?
Time is requested, and so time is granted. We don't have a third reading, we have no pending legislations, and I think this is our favorite time of the meeting. Am I right?
We'll find out.
We'll have to.
But it's kind of short tonight, so that's always, we're always somebody's.
Well, that makes it my favorite time.
Okay, as, as was noticed, or mentioned, the, there will be that public hearing, you guys know this, at the beginning of next week's, the March second meeting, and this is for renewal of applications for Edgar Carlton Scholl District Assessment for the property tax purposes, so. And there's, there's two of them, and those are always kind of fine, and so we'll see, we'll do that at the beginning of the meeting on, on March second. Just a couple of other things, well, I was going to talk about the Airbnb legislation, but I'll make sure that we got what I think was, you know, I'll compare those to a few of Mr. Cox, and we'll make sure we get that to you, and get it out to everybody.
You've got to start working on that, too.
Good. The comprehensive plan is, is getting ready to spring out of the gates. We, council approved the Quogue Mark Design Group as a consultants. The selection committee has been meeting weekly, and again, that's myself and Mr. Cox from council, Michael Conwell from the Citizens Advisory Panel, Eric Genow, our independent inspector, and Jennifer Six, who is in charge of our development, and we expect to roll that out. That's a term I learned from the people that suck at it, we're going to roll this thing out, at the near end of next week. So we expect to have an announcement, the, the, Mr. Cox spearheaded the notion of, of doing a mailer to everybody, so people know what this is about, and so that's going to happen. And what we're trying to achieve through the comprehensive plan collectively, that's a collective lead. And we will also, there'll be opportunities for people to, we'll have a webpage dedicated to it, we'll ask people to visit that webpage, you'll have an opportunity on the webpage, if you want to volunteer to be on the steering committee, you'll have a place to download the application, and we'll also have the applications here, they'll be in the library if you are interested in that regard, there'll be an opportunity to sign up for notices and alerts, and then over the course of the twelve months, there'll be numerous opportunities that we encourage for input from the citizens. A public visioning workshop to get us started, several workshops to follow, a community survey that'll block everybody that will be crafted with the expertise of the consultants, but also the input of the steering committee, and then review to follow, and the idea of being. And what we're trying to achieve through the comprehensive plan collectively, that's a collective lead. And we will also, there'll be opportunities for people to, we'll have a webpage dedicated to it. We'll ask people to visit that webpage. You'll have an opportunity on the webpage, if you want to volunteer to be on the steering committee, you'll have a place to download the application, or we'll also have the applications here, that they'll be able to library to, if you are interested in that regard. There'll be an opportunity to sign up for notices and alerts. And then over the course of the 12 months, there'll be numerous opportunities that we encourage for input from the citizens. A public vision workshop to get us started, several workshops to follow, a community survey that'll block everybody, that will be crafted with the expertise of the consultants, but also the input of the steering committee. And then review the follow. And the idea being to come up with a plan that the citizens, you know, the people who live here, you know, what would you like to see? What are our needs, what do you want, and how can we achieve those things? And always, 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 the overarching thing is, and not banish what we have. Make sure we preserve the rural character that's why we live here. So that's all about to happen. And the steering committee is gonna be somewhere, and this is the advice, we have three different consultants pitched to us, and all of them said, yes, you have a steering committee, and that ought to be somewhere around 15 to 20 members. And so that's the intention. And we want to make that as representative as we can, and hit every demographic that we can, and that's the idea of the selection committee, so that's what's happening there. What we would anticipate to cap that off then, is that we would hope then, get the selection committee in place, the steering committee in place, and be ready to have an initial meeting of that steering committee early part of April, and then we'd be able to roll out probably in May. And this is gonna be, you know, at least a 12-month process. All right, the only other thing I got is the polar bear jump. Raise your hand if you're gonna jump. That is gonna be not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And I know what this weather's doing, so maybe there'll still be ice in the late May of the year. But that's a great cause, the African camp, Rehm and Food Bank. Kelly and Heather Parizo do a lot of work on that, and everybody goes out and has a good time. And our diet guys are out there, just in case, and, so it's a great event. If you haven't seen it, it's a lot of fun. And that's Saturday, the 26th, I think they start at noon, maybe check their websites just to be sure. That's all I got.
One question, we got a good dragon boat races?
Dragon boat is on, I didn't tell you guys?
No.
Oh, man, no, the dragon boat is coming back.
We were third place a few years ago.
Yes, we were, yeah, yeah, we did, the city did this proud. I got the date, it's in July, it's like July 25th or so. But I'll have to give everybody a heads up, so, you know, start practicing, that's a lot of fun. And, but boy, that's one of those things that COVID stole from us. I had, Ed was working out the other day, I had a shirt on, I got from the first one in 2018. So I think we did 18, 19, and then it was shut down the next two years. But, yeah, we're always looking for volunteers, paddles too, so, yeah. We had a good time in there.
That was fun. It's amazing how paddock did that most of the.
It's amazing that we could, with zero practice or working together. Boy, and you know, the whole team, you know, I don't want to leave that topic without, this is about breast cancer survivors. That's what the cause is. And they have a team that went to the Worlds. They're just, well, Good Morning America came in and did a big future on them last, last fall. So it's a lot of fun, it's a big deal.
We were third place, but we were in there.
No, 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 we weren't quite ready, we were sort of in a missful condition. Hey, still, hey, good.
We got a medal, we got a medal for it, we got a medal.
Susan?
That's it.
Um, sorry, Paul, did I catch you off?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Just a couple things. We are done with closing the year end, obviously, because we already have in January, and we're reports. I will be sending out some of the spreadsheets now that have all the 2021 information, whether it be the revenue and or the expenditures, and also our information that we find in receipt from the county, the Department of Veterans Resources. I've given that out to all the department heads, so they are working on their annual budgets, which become our annual appropriations. We're meeting with them next Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we go over those, and then we put them in place, and then you see them as draft, as resolution as the draft appropriations to the year. That you should have by the end of that week. And then, so it'll be in place for the first reading for the March 2nd. We will have to pass it in March, because by April 1st, it has to be in place. So, but that's nothing new for those of you who've been here, it's kind of the way, it's the timeframe that it is. Once I start sending you all of the information, if you have any questions, please let me know. See, you can call me, what have you. I can explain it all, but it's pretty self-explanatory, some of you who've seen them for years. I tend to bring the big spreadsheets at meetings so that you can see it all in one fell swoop, but if you don't want to pay for it, I won't give you a copy of that either, but you will get it on your email, so you'll have that information. What we do also is, the spreadsheet gives you every line item that there is for expenses. However, the appropriation itself, and this was suggested to us by the auditor's office, actually breaks it into only two categories in each one, personal services and then other charges. That way, if I need to transfer something within a fund between those lines, as long as it's within those parameters, I don't need to come to counsel to get that approval. So unless it's jumping one of those two categories for another fund, then it doesn't go before counsel. So it kind of gives us a little flexibility to be able to move things around if something comes up that we're unaware of. But that's really our focus now, and catching up on everything that we, with all our people in our office, in and out, and getting that all done, so we're hoping things get back into the groove again, and make it a little bit easier for us. So I wanted to update you on that. I also have our unexpended balance for January. It is $6,94,375.12, that's all funds. That's all I have.
I have a question, not an appropriate time for it, no. So with you talking about the spreadsheets, will you be able to send those as those in Excel? Or the Google version of Excel sheets?
Yes, they're self-spreadsheet, so I can send them to you. Normally, a lot of times I send them as PDF, because some kind of people getting the newspaper around it. So, you know, not me and you sometimes, but I can send them to you as Excel.
Yeah, that would be.
That's what they are, they're self-spreadsheet.
Yeah, and the monthly bankroll and statement cash position, if that's possible?
Um.
I don't want to create more work, but if they're already Excel spreadsheets, it would be helpful to me to.
No, they are not already Excel spreadsheets, because they are part of the VIP program.
Okay.
And that one, I don't know if it, if it can be done that way. I'd have to look, because there's some, some of them have options where you can change the format of the report, because it doesn't, when I normally print it out, it doesn't come up or show up as that, so, yeah, I'll check.
Just a personal preference.
Gotcha.
Wait, could you send it as a PDF?
That's how it comes.
Wait, then you should open it and change it yourself.
No, you can't, you can't convert it to PDF back there.
You could open it and do an Excel spreadsheet and put your information, that's why I'm saying.
A lot of.
Any other questions? Can we have anything for old business?
I do. As talking about budgets, and so we were kind of talking about it at the last meeting with our fire and police, and I'm sure they're probably all over it, but looking at our staffing levels and where we need to be as far as full-time versus part-time as we move forward, and getting harder to recruit part timers. Do we, do we need to change our, yeah, our, the way we do things in those two departments? I think that's a concern we should be, you know.
That would be part of our, that would be part of our discussion next, that's for sure. And we're already, as you know, having those discussions, but we are.
I assume so, but I just, you know, I'm wondering. And we talked last year about it, and maybe we could look at it this year or two, street signs, and refreshing some of our street signs, and replacing some of the street signs that, you know, that we talked about it last year.
Right.
We really, really didn't get much of it last year, but maybe we can, we can do this year with them. That's all I have.
Any other?
I had a question, I didn't know if it was possible to do like department visits, especially for rest of the ones on council. The ones that I do, actually currently in the process, that we go around to all the departments with new council members, just show them how that department works, talk to the staff, just get a good, good view of, you know, from the ground level, what's going on.
No, not only me, it's you. I can try to coordinate or to reach out directly to the chiefs, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to.
Oh, even, even like the public, or your service division?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go right on there.
So I'd rather just be more.
Yeah, really, we're sure they got time to set up, sure.
And you can get behind the wheel of the salt truck.
So, but I can't, you can't, you can't go on a riding lawn, I've done that many times.
Mr. Powell, did I, I was sure you said that you know how to drive a.
I've offered my services to volume for free.
I appreciate that. I grew up in a town where the three trustees did all the. Yeah, right, right.
Anything else, John? Anything? Anybody in the audience have any public comments?
What do I turn this stuff down at?
Um, I would say after the meeting to Paul.
What I'm worried about is, you know, lumber moves like a market, just, you know, it's a market.
It is, it's something that needs to be done quickly. Would we have a discussion for an executive session? Then I would like to make motion for adjournment.
Second.
Call in favor of mine.
Aye, aye.
Our next meeting's gonna be March 2nd, and we do have that public hearing at 6:00 PM. That'll be the first thing we do.